Okay, I'm going to request that the live streaming of this virtual meeting commence. Okay. Good evening. We've just got some people entering the room. Good evening councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Christine O'Laurs. I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and I declare this meeting open at 6:01pm. The meeting is scheduled as a hybrid meeting, so I think there are some members of the public who are joining online and welcome also to the public in the gallery tonight. The recording of the meeting will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. So we are today meeting on the lands of the Rarangri-roya-Rong people, the traditional owners and custodians of this land. I want to pay my respects to the elders past and present and recognise their continuing connection to water, waters, lands and culture. I want to acknowledge that sovereignty was never ceded and it always was and always will be Aboriginal land. Thank you. Can I just ask everyone to pop their phones on to silent or turn them off if possible? I better just check mine. Yep, good. Okay. All right. I think we might introduce each of the councillors that are here with us tonight. So perhaps when I read out your name, if you can just maybe put your hand up for the viewers at home, but we've got councillor Matt Aturi, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Ruth Jelley, councillor Julie O'Brien, councillor Alexandra Sangster and councillor Vasilios Selkos. We also have many of our officers here tonight in attendance and also our mayoral monitors are here as well. I don't think that's supposed to say mayoral. Our monitors are here as well. So thank you. We do have at item three, an apology from councillor Boglas. She is currently on leave, so won't be with us tonight. That's some leave that was organised well ahead of knowing that she would have a meeting. This commitment, so yeah. Okay. So we're going to just start at item four with disclosures of conflict of interest. If any councillor or relevant staff member has a conflict of interest in respect of a matter on tonight's agenda, they need to disclose it and both disclose the nature of the conflict and then that they've got a conflict and the nature of the conflict. So I remind you that conflicts of interest also need to be declared when the item comes up on the agenda. So councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? There's one over there. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor O'Laurs. I have a conflict with the kindergarten expansion programme and the nature of the conflict is a family member is a senior officer of the department that oversees early childhood.
Thank you, Ms Petrie. Okay. And if there's any other, I guess, motion or amendment that comes up with the meeting that anyone has a conflict with, they also need to declare that at that point in time as well. Okay, we're going to look to the last, the minutes from the last meeting. So I'm looking for someone to confirm mover, someone to adopt the minutes from the ordinary meeting, council meeting held on the 21st of October 2024 and the special meeting of council held on the 25th of November 2024 and confirming, I guess, that they are, I guess, confirming that they are correct record of business transacted. Thank you councillor Demetriades. She has moved that motion. Is there someone who will second the motion? Councillor Greco, thank you very much. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. All right. Item six is councils' occupational safety responsibilities. So I'm sure you all know the council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure everyone who is at tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. So it's great to see everyone here this evening and I just need to remind you all that everyone in attendance, so that's people in the gallery, councillors, staff, that we need to all be courteous and respectful in our communications. It's okay to have differences of opinions, but we need to do that in a way that is respectful of each other. Also, and I hope this doesn't need saying, but we cannot tolerate any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectionable items or words. We can't, we won't tolerate racism, sexism or homophobia. We don't, we would ask that you don't interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved in the gallery, so please, other than if you're being asked to step forward to address the meeting, please remain quiet. And if any of the members of the public engage in conduct that is improper or disorderly, any member at all actually for that matter, that I may ask that that person cease their conduct and that that person is expected to comply with that direction. So we're up, we're going to have public question time now, so thank you for those who've come to talk to us. We also have some people online. We've allocated 30 minutes for the public question time. If we exceed that time, then I will ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they've been submitted by midday today. And you can only ask three questions. You cannot speak for more than two minutes. Be mindful that this is question time, so only ask your question, not make a statement. Questions relating to notices of motion on tonight's agenda or petitions or urgent business cannot be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. So for those who have put forward a question, I will call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, I'll take it that you're not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will most likely be the person to provide a response. And if you're in attendance, either in person or virtually, I will invite you to come to I will invite you to come to the lectern or unmute your microphone to state your name and ask your question. Like questions can be grouped together. The first person who submitted like questions can be asked their question. So I think we are going first to Sophie Peters of Reservoir. Is Sophie here? No? Then I might ask Jodie if you might please read Sophie's question on her behalf.
Thank you through you Mayor. Sophie's question relates to accessibility of public spaces and like barbecues and the like. Over the past three years, these areas have been fenced off due to reported asbestos and lead contamination. Residents have been warned to avoid even walking on the grass, yet the playground remains open and water flows from the contaminated zone into Darabben Creek. This raises concerns about public safety and the environment while also deterring potential home buyers. Excuse me. Could council provide an update or timeline on when these areas will be rehabilitated and reopened? Transparency and timely action are crucial to restoring public confidence and making these spaces usable again.
And yeah, thank you. We can have a response from the GM. Thank you.
Thanks very much Mayor and Sophie, thanks for the question. Now, we understand that your question's about Clements Reserve, so that's what I'm talking about in answering it. So I can confirm first up that the open areas of that reserve are safe for public use. The state government's Department of Transport and Planning own most of the closed off area, we own a small part. We're working with them towards remediating it and reopening it. That will take some more time. An investigation report is currently being peer reviewed by an environmental auditor and that will be submitted to the EPA for final review in early 2025. That will allow us to confirm the next steps on site.
Okay, thank you Sophie for your question. We now have Dean Hurlston's question. Dean also is not in attendance, so again, over to you please.
Thank you through you Mayor. Dean's question is, what is the approximate cost per council meeting for councillor and staff meals, refreshments and beverages?
Through you Mayor and thank you Dean for your question. So the average cost of meals at public council meetings is $1,000, which includes catering for councillors, executive officers, presenting officers and staff. Caterers are all local, all social enterprise suppliers. Thank you.
Thank you Dean. Belinda Lloyd, also not in attendance, has asked a question about animal control. If we could have that one read out please.
Thank you through you Mayor. Belinda actually has three questions. The first is how many patrols of Edwards Lake have been completed since Mabel's attack and in the last three months? How many fines have been issued for dogs off-leash at Edwards Lake since Mabel's attack and in the last three months? And what steps are being taken to address the lack of, the lack of resources in the animal control team to enable further patrols and provide education to the community about pet safety and caring for the wildlife?
Okay, and I think we have Vanessa Petrie to answer this question.
Thank you Belinda for your questions and through you Mayor. Patrols are undertaken by city safety and compliance officers three times a week, which has been occurring since Mabel the Swan's attack over 12 months ago. The patrols occur during business hours, after hours and also on weekends. Regarding your second question, council officers prioritise education over enforcement and are focused on speaking to owners about good animal management practices. A small number of infringements have been issued in the last three months. And regarding your third question. Like every public authority, council resources are not unlimited and council manages a significant amount of public land. We continue to strengthen our service approach to ensure the effective use of our resources. Significant council resources have been allocated to proactively patrolling Edwards Lake.
Thank you. Our next question is from George Ibrahim on behalf of the Darabben Interfaith Committee and I believe we have George online.
My councillors, for over 20 years, St George Cathedral has coordinated temporary road closures for religious and community events, adhering to all requirements including notifying emergency services, residents and the council and providing traffic management plans and certificate of currency as requested. Key events include road closure, for the road closures include Orthodox Good Friday, which is a street procession, Holy Saturday, which is a street procession and our annual community festival. Historically, no fees for, for the, there were no fees charged for these closures. This year we'll face with $135 application fee and $300 per road closure. While the council waived the road closure fee, the $135 application fee for the Good Friday and the Holy Saturday remained unresolved. These fees impose a financial burden on our congregation and other places of worship within Darabben. These events are vital for faith and community engagement, benefiting hundreds of residents. The Darabben Interfaith Committee unanimously supported removing these fees. We request that council to exempt all places of worship in Darabben with temporary road closure fees, including application fees recognising their cultural, spiritual and community contributions. Thank you.
Thank you George. I'm going to pass to Vanessa Petrie again.
Through you Mayor, thank you George for your question. I've asked that the manager of City Futures give you a call tomorrow and he's going to discuss your matter with you. Thank you.
Okay, we have someone in person, I believe, Chris Bellinson. Chris, would you like to come up and ask your question?
Yeah, I've got three questions. By the way, it's good to see all the fresh faces and welcome. And the old faces as well. Yeah, my, my questions are essentially about open space. Do you want me to read them all out at the same time or?
Yeah, that would be good, thank you.
Okay. In light of the proposed increase in the open space levy, which is going to be discussed tonight, to a full flat 5%, what's the timeline for a review of the unfair assessment criterion and priorities of the breathing space document produced by the previous council? Question two. Will council review the breathing space assessment criterion that has categorised our network of parks in the north end of Darabben as sea type parks and that, that have suffered historic and underfunding and could potentially remain that way for another 10 years? And question three. In view of the Preston High Street Activity Centre progressing with up to 15,000 new dwellings being built, what options are the council looking at to increase the quantity and quality of green and recreational open space in the immediate area? When Preston Oval is a dedicated premier sporting facility in the city of Darabben and should remain so and council has already identified Central Ward as having the least amount of accessible open space when compared to the rest of the municipality?
Thank you, some great questions. We've got Vanessa again, Petrie to answer the questions.
Through you Mayor, thank you Chris for your questions. Regarding your first two questions, unfortunately, we are yet to confirm when we will complete work on reviewing the open space strategy and the manager of City Futures is going to call you this week to have a discussion. I can confirm we are working through a review of the open space strategy, including the methodology and also the long-term need. And officers have been closely following other councils' planning amendments that have achieved a levy higher than 5% to understand the methodologies that have been supported by planning panels. And this followed council resolving in September 2022 to investigate long-term open space needs out to at least 2041 and to immediately start work on the planning scheme amendment that council will consider this evening. Regarding your third question, there are a number of actions around open space in the Preston Central Structure Plan that council considered and adopted in December last year. The state government's draft Activity Centre Plan for Preston identified that the state would develop a new and simplified approach to development contributions and that there was a need for future open space planning for Preston. Council's ongoing review of the open space strategy is expected to identify what these future open space needs are for Preston.
Thank you very much. I think you've identified some good challenges for us. Carolyn Lunt is next, so if you could please come up Carolyn and ask us your questions.
Carolyn Lunt, I live on the Mary Creek in Northkirk. Madam Mayor and councillors, I congratulate you all and wish you well in responding to the needs of our communities. Over 40 years, I've been excited by possible change, then disappointed that I and many others are not, have not had a voice in decision-making for our communities. Over the years, I've listened to residents at council meeting express their concerns over the loss of biodiversity and tree cover. So it's no surprise that my questions relate to the loss of biodiversity in the city of Darabben. My concerns are wide-ranging, but I've tried to keep it to just a few, but all relate to saving what little we have left. My concerns range from cats still wandering 24/7, curfew or not. Trees are being removed all around the place by a neighbour of mine in an, on open space on the Mary Creek and developers. Paths are ever creeping, concrete paths on both sides of our waterways, where all the agencies agreed to have one concrete path on one side of our waterways. Look up the Mary Creek Strategy. Ducks feeding this still occurs and I can't say, but somebody from council has suggested to my neighbour that they're fed oats. Vermin, we've got introduced species everywhere. The increasing numbers of Indian miners and foxes are a serious problem. Planning permits, the removal of indigenous species from gardens, once an occupancy certificate has been granted, they're just removed because people don't like indigenous, I don't know why.
Sorry Carolyn, can we get to a question?
Yeah, I've got them. Oh, that's Christine. Just one, nature strip planting, this permit is not enforced with invasive species planted, sometimes without a permit. My questions are. One, what is the council doing about the loss and protection of our biodiversity? Two, can you report back on the effectiveness of the current cat curfew? And three, can the council comment on the extent to which the follow-up on the, on the enforcement of planning permit conditions, especially about the planting of indigenous species as a condition of planning permits and those that relate to nature strip permits? I ask that this council consider all life, not just the human species. I ask that this council tighten local laws and introduce stricter laws to save our biodiversity.
Nearly done there? Yep.
Done.
Thank you.
And there are no dead lizards tonight. I did want to bring a sign in, but that wasn't permitted.
Okay, thank you. I might get Rachel Oliver to answer please.
Thanks Carolyn. Council puts significant work into protecting biodiversity and I'll run through the main things that council's doing. It is clear though that it remains a significant challenge, given the pressures of urban development, pests and climate change. There's sort of no question about that. The main work council's doing is expanding habitat areas by rewilding and tree planting, supporting wildlife corridors along the creeks and protecting remnant bushlands, restoring some ecological processes such as ecological burning and artificial hollows. Involving community in biodiversity conservation is part of ongoing education and engagement. And we maintain several policies that go towards protection, such as the cat curfew that you've mentioned and a number of planning overlays. Vanessa?
Thank you through you Mayor and thank you too Carolyn for your questions. Regarding your question on how effective the cat curfew has been, we, council started the curfew on the 1st of January 2021 and the curfew runs between 7pm and 7am. And this tends to be during cats' active hours and the vast majority of residents do comply with the curfew. When council was undertaking consultation for the domestic animal management plan later in that year, later in 2021, at that time, 16% of residents said they had seen a positive change in cat management. 22% said they had not noticed a change at nights and 56% they had noticed no change. We will once again review the domestic animal management plan next year to really understand community's experience of cat management and this may result in further changes. And regarding your second question around planning enforcement and trees, council actively enforces planning permits. To manage resources effectively, priority is placed on responding to complaints and inquiries from the public. But I can share last year, a proactive planning enforcement activity was undertaken for tree conditions and that inspected at a point in time, all the current planning permits across Darabben for tree compliance. And with respect to nature strip permits, permits that require removal of a street tree are rigorously enforced to ensure street trees are replaced as per the permit condition.
Thank you. We now have a question from David Taylor, who is not attending tonight. And so I might get Jodie to once again read out the question. Thank you.
Thank you through you Mayor. David's got two questions. The first relates to the management of the St George's Road median. Can council explain why the cutting of grass along this median has become so infrequent? Is this the new standard that Darabben residents can now expect? Can council tell the public if any other comparable council would permit such standards for a key entry point to the municipality? And can you please report back on what risks opposed to cyclists from the long grass that might obscure their view of vehicles at crossing points? And the second question relates to item 9.1 on the agenda where it's noted that challenges facing council, one of the challenges is very high inflation. Why is there no reference to an authoritative source to support such a claim? And as such, is it mere opinion and how can such a claim be substantiated when inflation in Australia has been falling for the last 15 months and is now nearing the RBA target and has been for at least the last six months?
Thank you and I'll ask Rachel Oliver to please answer David's questions.
Thanks for the questions David. The median along St George's Road is maintained by the Victorian Government's Department of Transport and Planning. Council's raised maintenance issues with them about that area and we've sought clarity on the schedule that they're seeking to put in place. We'll follow that up again. You may wish to contact the state government, it often helps for them to hear directly from community members. In regards to the challenges with inflation, the challenges we're facing into the future are in part about recent high inflation, which has an ongoing impact. Prices have risen more than income, which I know many of us are feeling and while inflation has softened since its peak, the previous price rises remain locked in. The analysis that we've done to inform the paper in tonight's agenda is based on published inflation indexes from the Australian Bureau of Statistics for the Melbourne All Groups data set. And it's based on the income side, on the rates cap increases set by the Victorian Essential Services Commission. Council's affected by several types of inflation. Overall inflation has been well above increases in income, which are constrained by the rates cap. On average since 2122, the average rate cap was 2.38%, which is the amount that council's rates income has increased by. Inflation's been much higher than that over the same period. The average consumer price index was 5.68%. The average construction price index was 6.2% and the average wage index was 2.8%. The construction price index was particularly high in 2223 and 2324. That was a time when the prices for construction and maintenance work rapidly increased and this has stayed high. Looking forward, we are projecting that inflation will stabilise. From 2627, the forecast inflation used for the next 10 years is comparable with the Reserve Bank of Australia's target inflation range of 2% to 3%. Thank you.
Okay, I'll now call up John Nugent, who's here in person to ask your question John. Got two minutes.
Thank you, thank you Mayor, councillors. Mayor, I've been complaining about this unfair policy since October 2018. At the previous council meeting, council advised that it had dropped the ball as it will not have a new sports subsidy performance policy available for this financial year as yet. As I have informed previously, this current policy discriminates against, against small, junior and disability clubs that will or have paid $1,000 more, $1,000 more. This means that these small junior clubs carry the responsibility of carrying a heavier burden than the senior clubs in the city. Mayor, why should junior and disability clubs carry this load when this council is inefficient to develop a new sports subsidy policy? And why doesn't, why council didn't get a consultant to do the work so it would have been, so it would have been in place at the start of this financial year? so it would have been in place at the start of this financial year? Yep, sure have, Mayor. And just to make it interest me, one of your general managers is talking about getting things from previous councils and so forth. This policy was also, the current policy we still got now, was taken from other councils, which was totally wrong, you know? And has absolutely crucified junior clubs and so forth. But anyway, I'll go on. Mayor, my question is about asking a question from the floor at council meetings without being vetted. Some two years ago, this right was taken away from the people without any discussion. Council have advised that they will bring this policy back with community input. Why, I don't know. But anyway. Mayor, there was no better example than the last council meeting, why this policy should be brought back now. The council met in September 24, when a resident came into the meeting and wanted to ask a question without submitting a question.
Respectfully, your time's up. Could you just move it along very quickly?
Yeah, I am there, yeah. Like, people would have been speaking a bit longer, but I'll be quick. Council officers advised the person couldn't ask the question as he didn't follow the procedure. Mayor, this was a right of every resident in the city and should be returned now. Without consultation, the same was taken away. And the lucky last question, Mayor. Mayor, could you please apply what council has done to promote the Christmas period and the Chinese New Year period, which falls in late January? Today, council has provided only a Christmas tree. There is no decorations. Even the Preston market has showed more Christmas spirit than the Preston Central. And even Edward Street Reservoir had standard greeting all the children and adults in the street. It seems to me, Mayor, that the rich has stolen the Christmas spirit from the central business district.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll get Carolyn Besson to answer.
Thank you, John, for your questions. I'll take the first question. So council endorsed a minor update to the sporting fees, charges and occupancy agreement policy on the 14th of August 2024. And that was to align with the state government's fair access policy roadmap to deliver gender equitable access to publicly owned community sport infrastructure and level the playing field for women and girls. Now, on the 29th of April 2024, council endorsed the continuation of the current performance subsidy programme and a holistic review of the sporting fees, charges and occupancy agreement policy in 2025, which will include consultation with sporting clubs and with a view to adjust the performance subsidy criteria to incentivise diverse participation more strongly. As we've outlined previously, junior clubs are eligible to participate in the current performance subsidy programme, which does have a criteria relating to junior teams and encouraging and rewarding participation by people with a disability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just couldn't agree with what more this officer has just stated. Now, I'm sorry, I don't want to upset anyone and I'm not saying...
That's right, you're allowed to disagree, but you've had your three questions.
I know, I have your three questions, but I don't want to come back next month and to ask the question again and get a different answer.
I need to ask for a procedural motion, please, to extend the time. We've still got one more person to ask questions, so. Thank you, councillor Beattano. And seconded by Matt Aturi. Do I need to do a vote on that? Yep, all in favour? Thank you. Yeah, I do need to ask you to sit down, John. You've had a fair amount of time.
No, this has been going on for too long. They say the same thing all the time, but I'm sorry. Kids is paying more thing. This act, this policy discriminate against junior clubs. Unless you haven't got women in your club, you discriminate against them. You just can't have an all male football club or a disability football club with a or a junior, I'm sorry, a disability club, football club with just disabilities and so forth. This break doesn't do it. This council has not helped anyone about it.
Thank you. You've made your point. Yep, thank you. Okay, we now have questions from Suzanne Newton, who is online now. Two other answers.
Thank you through you, Mayor. John, thanks for your question about questions on notice. I recall that you asked a similar question in September. With regard to your comment about us changing the practice without consultation, I can confirm that we did consult last time and the rules changed because it is a requirement of the Local Government Act that we do consult on the governance rules. So that was through the subject to community consultation. I guess the challenge that we have with questions coming in is the ability to receive those questions in advance allows us time to actually gather the information and to be able to respond on the night. If we aren't given that opportunity, it could give rise to us having to take questions on notice and you've taken the time to come into the gallery. Like, it would be appropriate to be able to give you an answer to your question when you're here and also for others who are watching online or in the gallery as well. But we have heard your feedback and certainly when we do take the process of reviewing the governance rules, the way that we handle public question time will be encompassed in the governance rules and we'll be open, certainly we'll be open for public consultation. We encourage feedback at that time. In the new year, so we are going through a process of doing an internal review and we'll be talking to councillors about their governance rules. But we certainly will look to adopt by mid-year, so you could imagine by about March, we should be out in the community.
And the third question?
Thank you. So this relates to your question about Christmas. So I suppose we acknowledge that Darabin is a uniquely diverse and vibrant community and council celebrates Christmas and also honours the different ways that our residents come together at this time of year, reflecting many different traditions and backgrounds. So traditional Christmas displays and decorations and Santa appearances will be enjoyed throughout Darabin's key activity centres. For more details, so we have installed a 3.6 metre Christmas tree at Preston Town Hall this year and also six other Christmas trees in other locations throughout Darabin. Darabin celebrates and our songs, musical performances have brought songs of joy to 22 different locations across the city over the past two weekends. And that includes an event at Edward Lakes on Saturday evening that was attended by hundreds of family members. Festive, sorry, festive angel wings and Christmas artwork are featured on shop windows in six activity centres, including a festive artwork that spans 10 shops' windows in Kingsbury. Artists run workshops on making a recycled Christmas gift bag have been delivered in activity centres with over 200 community members participating. Darabin also celebrates the Lunar New Year through special cultural programming held at Preston Library, at the Inter-Cultural Centre and Kian's Park's Children's Hub. If you want more details, the full festive season and Lunar New Year programme is promoted on council's website and social media platform. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the newsletter, so the paper newsletter that you've received recently, the programme is also featured in there. All right. We will. Okay, at the customer service centre, the information can be made available there. Thank you.
Okay, we probably do just need to move along. Thank you for your questions. We really appreciate them and your interest in the community. Yeah. Okay. I think. I think the staff have given you an answer, so we need to move on now. Thank you. So we now have an online question. Suzanne Newton is attending virtually and she has, I think, two, maybe three questions. So I'm going to pass to you now, Suzanne.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Suzanne Newton and I have three questions. So my first question is, can the council confirm that the new council will continue to fully fund the crucial 36.44 million investment in IT infrastructure over the next four years as per the previous monitor's recommendation and the Audit and Risk Committee recommendation? My second question is, can council confirm that the new council will prioritise suitable staff accommodation as per the previous monitor's recommendation? And are there any timelines available for when this will happen or high level costings available? If not, when will this information be available? And my third question, I know that Chris Erlison asked a question about the activity centre as well, but this is quite different. So can council confirm what advocacy approach the new council will take to the draft Preston High Street Activity Centre Plan, with the state government planning to allow up to 15,300 more apartments in Preston Central? Will the council push the state government for investment in more services, open space and infrastructure in Preston Central, such as more childcare centres and schools? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to hand over to Vanessa Petrie to answer. Oh, no, Rachel, sorry.
I'll take the first two and then pass to Vanessa. Thanks for the question. I'll answer the two first questions about projects together. So an update on both those projects can be found in the Quarterly Performance Report. That's item 9.2 on the agenda today. And refer to page 66 and then page 76 respectively. Over the next few months, council's developing the council plan and long-term financial plan, including consultation with community. Confirmation of funding and priorities for future years would be considered by council through that process. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your question. In August this year, council endorsed advocacy principles and priorities for Preston Central Activity Centre. And we are now waiting for the state government to release its final plan for Preston Central, which we understand will happen soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne, for your ongoing interest in the council. And thank you to all of the questioners for your interest as well. We really appreciate that you are engaged in your local community. We're now moving on to submissions. Council's governance rules permit members of the public to register to make two-minute submissions at an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters that are listed on the agenda of today's meeting. So in accordance with our governance rules, submissions can't be made in relation to notices of motion and urgent business. So thank you to those who have registered their intention to do this. We've got two requests for this meeting and they're both virtual submissions. So I'm going to start with Helen Ellison, who's requested to make a submission to agenda item 9.4, which is the kindergarten expansion programme. So welcome, Helen.
Thank you. Just making my camera work. It will turn on in a minute. It's slow.
Got you, yep.
Got me now? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Whilst we have read and appreciate the considerations outlined in the report in the agenda, we at Mary Community Childcare and Kinder are formally requesting a deferral or suspension of the decision not to proceed with stage two of the expansion project. Our position is that deferring or suspending the decision will allow Mary time to explore additional funding opportunities, review updated demand projections and ensure a long-term alignment of council's early childhood infrastructure strategy with community needs. We have a few points here and I've got time hopefully. A key point, supporting a deferral. Number one, strategic long-term planning. The decision not to proceed risks compromising Mary's future as we transition towards the Department of Education's best start, best life reforms, including 30 hours of pre-prep by 2036. The officers' assessment of low demand contradicts the data in the kindergarten infrastructure and service plan, which indicates rising needs in our area. Deferral would allow council's flexibility to adapt to a future demographic and policy changes. Number two, funding opportunities. $500,000 has already been secured from the state government and in addition to funding streams could be pursued to reduce council's financial burden. Considerable resources have already been detailed, has been used to detail these plans, which should not be wasted. And three, equity and choice of the community. Mary provides integrated long daycare and sessional kinder, which enhances families' choice and supports quality early learning. The proposed expansion will benefit actually 22 children annually due to innovative programming, exceeding the immediate perception of 11 additional places outlined in the report. Integrated long daycare kindergarten service must remain a viable option for families in Darabin as current priorities seem heavily weighted towards a sessional kindergarten. We respectfully request that the council defer the Mary stage two expansion decision to a later date. This approach will allow for more comprehensive evaluation of the community needs in the future.
Okay.
And possible funding without permanently closing off the important opportunity for local families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Helen. That's great. All right, thank you. I'll now call on Graham Martin, who's requested to make a submission to agenda item 9.9, which is the lease to Flow Power, the neighbourhood battery at Two Wing Grove Street, Delfington. So Graham, you've got your cam on. If you can pop your microphone on and you've got two minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Graham Martin, the president of Village Power. Village Power have been pursuing and goal of implementing a community-scale battery for over seven years. Understanding how to implement and benefit community batteries is new territory. Navigating this territory has been a long journey for us as volunteers, as well as for the energy industry and critical stakeholders, including council. As described in the office's report under Strategic Direction Three, Climate Green and Sustainable, community batteries are essential to our transitional way from coal and gas to renewable energy. Village Power aims to involve the community in the transition by providing information, incentives and access to locally generated carbon-free renewable energy. Village Power selected Flow Power to implement our unique community subscription model and to arm and operate the battery. We believe that Flow Power's business ethos aligns with our principles. And this motion is regarding the lease or the land to the battery being issued in Flow Power. Interested engagement in community energy has grown significantly, especially over the last year. Our community group membership has grown. We have now 50 paid members. We've established a community advisory panel and a battery art working group, all of which include local people willing to learn and get involved. Tonight's decision, with your support, will enable us to fulfill our community vision for local renewable energy. There is no Plan B if this resolution does not pass, which is why we strongly seek your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Okay, so two great submissions there and we have no petitions tonight. So we'll move on to the next item. I just want to make a couple of statements before we get started. We have got a really large agenda. And, you know, we're a new council, so we're very excited about that. I will be probably relying on governance quite a bit to assist me through the meeting. But I did want to just say that in order to keep the meeting moving along, I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of the debate on each item. But if I think sufficient questions have occurred, then I will exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. I'll also ask, I may also ask on occasions where we have a mover and a seconder and no councillors against a motion, that we just continue straight to the vote at that point. And the last thing I want to just put upfront is that we have an apology from councillor Bogliss tonight. So we have an even number of councillors. So just, there may be occasion where I may need to put a casting vote. And in that case, I just want to be clear that my casting vote will be the same as my deliberative vote. So, thank you. We'll continue on. So item nine is consideration of reports. So first up, we have the draft financial year 2025/26 budget parameters and the 10-year long-term budget envelopes. Okay, do councillors have any questions regarding this item that they'd like to ask of the officers? Okay, if there are no further questions, oh, I need someone to put forward a motion. Yeah, Matt Aturi, councillor Aturi? Sorry, excuse me. Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll commence the debate. I remind you that once we've entered the debate, there will be no further questions. So do I have a mover and councillor Aturi? Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor?
Mayor, I would like to second it, but first I'd like to see the motion to see whether...
Mayor, I would like to second it, but first I'd like to see the motion to see what the motion says before I second it. Because I know that there's been some changes to the officer recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I sent through an amended one, Mayor.
Yep.
About 10 minutes before.
Okay, so we've got a, we've got a
That's the one.
Putting forward that motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
Mayor, I'm happy to second it because I've noticed that my my suggestions have been inserted into the motion.
Thank you. We have already got councillor O'Brien now, but thank you very much.
I think it was councillor Sangster.
Sangster, sorry. Councillor Sangster. Yeah, so, okay, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. The report sort of outlines parameters that provide council a starting point to consider its budget, priorities and trajectory over the next council term and beyond. And I think the key point in this motion is that that further detailed review will be undertaken by council as part of its budget development process. So it's really the first step in a long process as we develop the budget, as outlined in Clause Five of that motion on the screen. The motion's also designed to give councillors options when it comes to considering alternatives to the current parameters, as we see in Clause Three. And just to run through those very briefly, Mayor, the first part will provide council with information relating to funding a large council facility like Reservoir Leisure Centre and an opportunity to see modelling on funding a medium sized facility and so on. And of course, to seek the advice of the Audit and Risk Committee on those modelling items. Just in closing, Mayor, the financial sustainability is obviously going to be an important part of going through this process. And I think the motion as it stands in terms of providing that modelling and then subsequent advice on that modelling is a prudent course of action to inform our decision making going forward. I'd like to thank officers for their work on the report that is before council and of course for councillors for assisting in putting this motion together, in particular councillors Greco and O'Brien. And I commend the motion to the chamber.
Okay, thank you. Does the second wish to speak? Reserve your right? Or, yeah, nice. Any councillors in opposition? No, okay. So are we happy to move?
Mayor, could I speak in relation to the motion?
Okay.
I'd just like to say a few words in relation, this is an important item. What this item does, as has been mentioned by the mover of the motion, it actually sets the framing and the parameters and also in relation to the, some of the key assumptions that we would need to look at in building a budget and also building a 10 year long term financial plan. I'd like to thank councillor Terry for including my suggested changes, particularly the one in regards to the Reservoir Leisure Centre as a long term project for the council to consider and to consider how to finance that project with the long term financial plan. And also what I've included, and I'm grateful again for the councillor that moved the motion, that in order for this process to be driven by council, that throughout the process, that the councillors are consulted and that the officers work with the councillors in developing the parameters and also in developing the models that will be coming back to us to determine what sort of long term financial plan we would like to establish and also what sort of budget constraints we would like to entertain. Why I've put that in, because I think it's important as we look around the table, there are seven new councillors. For those that haven't noticed, there's been an election that's occurred. And when there is an election, there's obviously a shift in terms of council priorities. So those things need to be taken into account in determining the parameters and also in determining the key assumptions. I think this motion, the way it's been drafted, I think that encompasses that. It involves the councillors and also we will be entertaining further options in regards to our future financial outlook. Thank you.
Councillor Greco. So if everyone's happy, we might continue to the vote. I'd just like to say before we do that I think it's a great motion and it's been a fantastic process of collaboration to get to a point where we can all agree on that. So can I ask for all those in favour? That's unanimous. So fantastic. We'll move on to the next item. So this one is the Quarter One Performance Report, financial and non-financial, ending 30th of September 2024. Do we have anyone who would like to put forward the motion?
Sorry, Mayor, could I ask a question or two of officers before we go into debate? Is that, is that okay?
Yes, you can, apologies.
Are the relevant officers in the room? I'll make the assumption that the answer is yes. So just very, very quickly, what projects are included or represented in the budget carry forwards that are listed on page 29 of the Agenda Papers, both for operating expenditure and capital works? There's a note on page 25, six projects have been either put on hold or deferred and two have not yet started. And I think I might have the answer to the question. Are those the projects that are listed on page 109 of the papers?
Just give us a minute to check those page references, thanks. Through you, Mayor. It doesn't look clear to me that the two page references directly correlate. We could certainly provide some information after the meeting that goes to that. Broadly, the projects that have been carried forward are projects that weren't, that were essentially initially scheduled for last year and weren't finished last year. We've started reporting them explicitly so that we can track really closely the completion of those. We try not to carry forward many projects and certainly last year we had a few more than we were hoping for. And it means monitoring them is really important for managing risk. But in terms of the detail of each of those, that's something I would have to take after the meeting. Okay, are there any other questions? If there's no further questions, we'll commence the debate. I remind you that once we enter the debate, there's no further questions. Do I have a mover for this motion?
I'll move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Jelly. Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Demetriadis. Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
Just very briefly to thank the staff for all of their work in preparing the quarterly financial report. It's a great example of good governance, pardon me, I'm not standing up. This is a core part of the duties of the council in ensuring that there is great transparency and clarity for all of our community about what we are doing, what we're planning to do and how that is tracking over time. So I commend the motion to fellow councillors.
Okay, does the second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone opposed to the motion?
Mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like to councillors to consider. If officers could put the amendment up on the screen.
Okay, do we have a second for that amendment?
I'll have to try and see if it's an accurate description. Yep, that's it, yep.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Can we pose a question in relation to the amendment or?
Is it a clarification?
A question related to the timing suggested, I guess. Yes, it would be a question.
Question to the officers?
Sorry, thank you. So yes, through you, Mayor. Just wondering in relation to the timing outlined in the amendment, if the 28th of January is feasible, given where we are now and the amount of work that we have ahead of us. This is obviously important work, but I just want to be cognizant of the amount of workload for people. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, councillor O'Brien. And through you, Mayor Alaris. Officers have already started work out looking at what options they could bring to council. And so I would anticipate that we would be able to bring a report in January.
Okay, so do we have a second then for the motion? Matt, councillor Aturi? Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
Pardon me, Mayor.
Just very briefly, the amendment that I'm putting forward, I think if you look at the report, there are two items that have been deferred under officer recommendation. I think they're two very important policy documents. They're four years into making these documents. We've been waiting a really long time for these policy documents to be put together. I know that some of the advisory committees have been waiting for these documents and these policies to be put forward. So I'm asking officers to come back to us to see how we can do that work and get that work completed as part of the existing council plan so that then we can kick off with the new council plan in getting this work done.
Some advice, hang on a moment. Apparently I didn't ask if the mover would like to accept the amendment.
Yes, I'm actually happy to accept the amendment, thank you, Mayor. If the second is amenable to that as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Apologies, continue on councillor Greco. You can continue on councillor Greco. Oh, you're finished? Yeah, thank you. Okay, and did the second wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Are there anyone wanting to speak in opposition to the motion? Okay, any other speakers? Okay, councillors, if there's no further debate, we're going to put this item to the vote. So all those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have the governance report now of December 2024. So do any councillors have any questions of the officers regarding this report? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I have a question in relation to the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. I was foreshadowing an amendment to include more councillors on that committee. My understanding is that the chair and of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee actually welcomes more councillors being on that committee. I happened to bump into him at the market on Saturday because he noticed this item on the agenda. And so I was just wondering whether we could actually include that as an amendment so that to allow more councillors to be on the advisory. And I just wanted to seek some advice through you from our officers.
Yep, so the CEO will take that question, thank you.
Thanks councillor Greco and through you, Mayor Alaris. So I'm aware that the co-chair has been in contact with the mayor, offering attendance at meetings rather than membership at meetings. So what we've proposed in the meeting in the committees this evening is for two representatives of council, being the mayor and the deputy mayor, with us talking to the advisory committee about the forums that could be held with DAC and the councillors and also about councillors being able to attend their meetings. But dealing with the committee in the first instance to get their views was the path we're taking. Thank you.
Just a supplementary question. How do we reflect what you've just said through you, the mayor, in passing of a resolution? Because they are words that are stated here, but if they're not reflected in a resolution, then they won't have any validity in the event that, you know, you're only here temporarily. So I just want that to actually be, I'm looking for a way of actually reflecting that more formally, from a governance perspective.
Thanks again for the question councillor Greco and through you, Mayor Alaris. So as you're aware, councillors, we will be reviewing all committees within the next six months, as we've undertaken to do. Our undertaking here is not to change the membership per se, but how councilors are engaged with the DAC on an ongoing basis. I don't think there is a way during setting up, for me anyway, from a governance perspective, to be able to set it up in the meeting membership. But councillors can move something else, of course, if they wish. I would just ask that we have respect for the committee as we would with all committees as to who they would like as members and how they would like to interact with council. And I'm certainly not fobbing it off, but I give an undertaking because we've got it here and we'll be meeting with the DAC this year on the most appropriate way for council to interact on an ongoing basis with them. Tonight is only formally allocating council laws to the committee, as you're well aware, through the various committees that we have. So in short, I don't believe there is a way through the allocation of members to committees that you would do that tonight, failing a motion from the floor.
Thank you. Can I also, there is an amended officer recommendation, I believe, so we might need that up on the screen for people to see. Okay. Yeah, so it's literally a change in order because one of the decisions influences others, I believe. Yep. So the Audit and Risk Committee influences the appointment to the various committees. Yes, councillor Selkos would like to ask a question.
Through you, Mayor. It says from 1st of January 2025. However, the Audit and Risk Committee, I'm aware, has a meeting in December.
Good point.
Thank you for the question through you, Mayor. So that's correct, we do have an existing committee member who still has a term. So the term expires at the end of the year so that the committee member would still be able to attend the meeting. This is for a new term.
Yep. Are there any other questions?
Sorry, Mayor, do we have to fill that in? There's a blank for a reason, sorry.
It's in your papers, so that was a confidential kind of decision.
Yeah, okay, now I got it, sorry.
Okay, so does anyone want to move, anyone willing to move this motion? Councillor Aturi? Seconded by councillor Selkos. And does the Can we scroll so that people can see the rest of it? Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then we have all the groups. So this is all being passed in one motion? Good. People have seen this list before. Okay, does the mover wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, please, thanks, Mayor. I'll keep my comments brief. The motion The motion for the chair is largely administrative, I think, under the governance rules. But one of the highlights is, of course, the appointment of councillors to various positions in those, on those committees. And I think I speak on behalf of all councillors when I say that I'm quite excited to engage with those committees and work very closely with those committees and stakeholder groups on the important work and advice that they do and provide to council. I think I'll leave it there and commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Is the second wish to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right.
Thank you. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition? Councillor Greco?
I have an amendment that I'd like to put forward. It was circulated earlier this morning to councillors and our officers.
Do we have that amendment?
If I may, Mayor, just on the basis of what the CEO just said, I'm happy to remove the parts that are highlighted in red in relation to point number six regarding the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. And I take on word what the CEO has said.
Okay, so we've just got the addition of point seven then? Okay, does anyone, I'll give you a second to have a look at it, but if anyone... Oh, sorry. Are you okay to accept that?
I'm happy to accept that amendment.
Amendment?
I'm happy to accept that.
Yep, okay. Excuse me for a moment.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Just for your information councillors, through you, Mayor Alaris, the timing that has been put into this notice, this amendment, sorry, says at the last council meeting in March or April. I'd just respectfully like to suggest that May would be a better time for the organisation because it'll line up, then obviously it lines up with briefing, council meeting, start on the 1st of July, but get it all done by then, if that's okay with the mover and the second.
Yep, sorry, I saw M and read May instead of March, so save for that, I accept the amendment, so. It's councillor Greco.
That's okay councillor Greco, yep, okay. So... Okay, thank you. So councillor Churey, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak? You have? We did amendment, he's done, reserved your right. Would anyone else, would anyone like to speak?
Could I just speak in relation to the amendment that I just put forward? And it's been accepted by the mover and the second. Just to put into context what I, what this amendment basically does. As we know, there's a sunset clause with the existing advisory committees. The sunset clause is on the 30th of June. And what this amendment does, and I'm happy for it that it's been incorporated into the substantive motion, is that it sets in motion the process of a review of the advisory committees. We have a lot of committees and it's high time that we have a review of those committees. And that the review actually will take place, and I accept the date of May, so that then when we get to the end of June, hopefully we will have a report back and then we'll be in a really good position then to determine what the future of those committees will be and come the 1st of July 2025. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Any other speakers? We'll move to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you all. Okay, we are now at the Kindergarten Expansion Programme, item 9.4. We have a staff member with...
I'm Mayor Alaris. I'm just stating my conflict and I'm going to leave the chamber now.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding this item? Okay, if there are no questions, we will commence the debate and remind you that once we enter the debate that there will be no further questions. Do I have a mover for the motion?
I'd like to move an amended motion.
So, thank you councillor Selkos. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Demetriadis? Does the move... Oh! Oh, I've made the call, okay. Sorry, sorry, I didn't see. Councillor Selkos, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to start by saying thank you to the officers for the report and all the work that's been put into getting us to where we are today. By posting this motion today, we are significantly boosting our capacity at kindergartens. So I hope all councillors can support us today. Thanks.
Okay, would the second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak in opposition of this motion?
Mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like councillors to consider. Again, it was circulated earlier this morning. The amendment's in relation to point five of the recommendation there.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Can I just seek some clarification from councillor Greco? What the effect of that amendment is?
I think you can seek advice from officers?
Yeah, it'd be great to get some advice from officers on, yes, it's just not entirely clear to me.
Okay, yep, is the amendment acceptable to the mover and second?
No.
Okay. Oh, second is down there?
No.
No, okay. With your question?
Perhaps we should seek, test the chamber to see if there's a second for the motion, for the amendment. If we seek a second for the amendment, then it would be relevant to ask the question. But perhaps if there's not a second for the amendment, then there might be no need to extend the time.
So it's... Yeah, do you have, is there a second to that motion? Okay, so the motion lapses, we're back to the previous one? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to that motion? Okay, are there any other speakers? You've... You did not, yes, continue.
Sorry, I just make some more brief comments, Mayor. It's really great to see that in the initial pipeline, Mary Community Childcare and Kindergarten and 2A Raleigh Street in Thornbury have been expanded and upgraded thanks to $600,000 in contributions from the state labor government. And of course, we have Maryborough Avenue Kindergarten in Kingsbury in My Ward, which will be on the road to being upgraded shortly. Of course, it's out to tender at the moment with construction due to commence in April 2025, thanks to a $1.7 million contribution from the state labor government as well to deliver an extra 38 extra places at this facility. And I know how important this facility is to local parents in my community. And of course, in this particular motion, it's great to be able to endorse progression of the design and subsequent construction at Jellystone Crescent and Blake Street in Reservoir. Also important to note the amended motion that's been moved by councillor Selkos at point five, that other sites that are mentioned in this report will be continued to be considered by council should additional funding become available in accordance with that motion. Now, yeah, commend the motion to the chamber.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll, if there's no other speakers, we'll go to the vote. Is that acceptable? Okay, all those in favour? And that's passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we're up to nine point...
Excuse me, Mayor. Sorry to interject, do we, somebody need to go and get Vanessa to return to the chamber? I've just jumped on your bandwagon, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Bruised toes.
About to say, can we get Vanessa back? Thank you. It's quite all right. I had forgotten, I had it in my ear. All right, we are going to the Migration Public Artwork Locations Options. That's item 9.5. So do councillors have any questions of the officers regarding this item? No? Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Greco?
Mayor, I'd like to move my alternate motion that I circulated earlier this morning.
Get that up on the screen, please. Do we have a second for this motion? So I would say that motion lapses councillor Greco. So we will move back to the previous motion. Do we have a mover for this motion? Councillor Sangster? Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Jelly? Would the mover, oh, yeah, would the mover wish to speak?
Yes, I'd just like to support the offer recommendation that council endorses, the G E Robinson Park Reserve as the permanent location for the migration public artwork to be installed. I think that there's been an enormous amount of work that's gone into this and there's been fantastic consultation with a diverse group of people. I recognise that we've been asked not to delay and I think that's incredibly important given council's reputation as a leader in the Australian arts community. The Robinson Park Reservoir is circled by a busy bike track. It's well utilised, tennis public courts, public tennis courts. And it's also an area which is frequented by a diverse local audience. There's sufficient space to support the artwork and it will bring public art to an area in Darabben which is under-resourced by such work. So I highly endorse the motion and thank for all the work that's gone into it.
Thank you councillor Sangster. Would the second like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I will, very briefly. And that is to address, I guess, some of the key concerns that councillor Greco raised in his alternate motion. I think it's unfortunate, but not the worst thing in the world. It's unfortunate for the artists who have diverted slightly from the brief. But sometimes in the creative industries, that happens. And that we need to allow great ideas to not be constrained by some of the significant constraints in the brief. So sometimes with art and creation, you use the brief and the parameters to push up against those boundaries. And occasionally you've got to break beyond those boundaries and something better is created. And I think that's what we have here. I think if we were to insist on having this artwork located here in central Preston, we would be missing out on great opportunities to have a really broad, diverse of people of all ages and abilities to be able to interact with art. And I think it's a great signifier that Darabben is a place that appreciates the full breadth of what art can be in our community and recognises that art can be, it doesn't all have to live in the same place. And that we are happy to see art to be extended out to a broad range of locations. So while it's unfortunate in this instance that the brief was diverted from very slightly, I trust the process of the artist and the committee, and the committee members that have been working with that artist in order to fulfil the vision that was at the heart of the project itself. So I commend the motion to you councillors.
Thank you councillor Jelly. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Councillor Gajhan?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I'm really disappointed that this project is not going ahead as originally planned. Councillors, if you look at the project brief, it was very clear in the project brief that this artwork was informed by the particular site, which was the Preston Civic Precinct area. It was absolutely crystal clear in the project brief in many instances that this artwork was to occur there. We have an intercultural centre there and that's why this artwork was commissioned and the artist was fully informed about that because it was absolutely clear in the project brief. Now what we're doing is relegating, and I'm afraid to say that, relegating this important piece of work to a park, which not many people in the city of Darabben will actually be aware of. And it's really unfortunate that we're doing that. This work is important because, as we know, more than 60% of the residents in Darabben are from a non-English speaking background. To not have this piece of work, and that's why this piece of work was originally intended outside here of the town hall, in order to give it the utmost prominence, which is due respect to the people of diverse backgrounds that live in this community. We're not doing that. We're actually giving it another place, which I think is really unfair. The other thing too is that the changing of the area did not emanate from the reference group, did not emanate from the officers, did not emanate even from the artists. It emanated from a councillor moving a motion here in the previous council to move the artwork. I think that was irresponsible in doing that when the project brief clearly said again, and I'm repeating that because it's an important point, that the artwork should have been happening here. So I urge councillors to reconsider this and perhaps to defer this item.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any other speakers? Okay, well, we might move to the, we might, if there's no further debate, we'll move to the vote. You were the mover? You do have a right of reply? Yeah, you have a right of reply?
Okay, I just wanted to say in response that this decision was endorsed by the previous council in August 2024. The time for objections has long passed, it's incredibly bad governance, I believe, to go back on a decision where so much time, energy, effort and public input has been put into place. This artwork is to be placed in a park which has not yet benefited from the power of public art. The way that we expand the, you know, community's awareness of public art, the way that we encourage people to go into parks that perhaps are not as well utilised as others is to bring exactly things like this into place. So yes, I absolutely agree that it moved away from the brief, but we have reached a point in this journey where to delay is going to impact council's reputation as a leader in the Australian arts community and is likely going to impact artists' willingness to work with council on future projects. So I highly commend that we move forward with this project.
Okay, we might now proceed to the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. All those against? And we have one abstainer. Yeah, so do I need to name everyone? So those four was... Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing. Councillor, those four was councillor Churey, councillor Demetriadis, councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster and councillor Selkos. And myself, councillor Alaris. And abstaining was councillor Greco. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to item 9.6, which is the General Local Law Review. Do councillors have any questions on this item?
Mayor, I have a question about the circulated amendment. Just foreshadowing that, if that's how this debate goes.
So yeah, so the questions are generally to the staff, to the officers in relation to.
Yes, it would be a question to the staff if the amendment were on foot during the debate. If that makes sense, similar to the last scenario.
So, well, I guess I will ask, is there a mover of this motion? Okay, so councillor O'Brien would like to move the motion, yeah? Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Churey? Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, just briefly. So, yes, through you, Mayor. Just, I guess, bringing to the attention of the chamber and those watching online that this piece of work is very important to us in terms of managing risk across the city. We have a short period of time within which to achieve a new set of general local laws. We know there's many things contained in there that are bugbears for our community and so hopefully we can address some of those and make things a bit smoother and easier for everybody to understand and to work with. And where there's compliance requirements, that some of those are also easier for us to deal with. And so I commend the motion to the chamber.
Would the second like to speak?
Again, make some brief comments, Mayor. Want to associate myself with the comments of councillor O'Brien. It is an important piece of work, given the sunsetting of the current local laws. But in addition to what councillor O'Brien said, I'd just encourage members in the community to engage with the exposure draft that will go out to community engagement in the new year. And I look forward to seeing the results of that so we can ensure that the new local law is in place in time before that sunsetting. Thank you, Mayor.
Is anyone wanting to speak in opposition to this motion?
May I have an amendment that I'd like to move? Again, it was circulated early this morning.
Do we have a second for this amendment? Councillor Dimitriatus? Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, got it. Thank you. Under the mover and second of the original motion, are they happy to accept this amendment?
I think my first statement is I have a question of staff before understanding this in more detail.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, so, sorry, yes, through you, Mayor, to the staff. Given the local laws are supposed to exist, I guess, in concert with other legislation regulations that we all exist with, do we think that including the word racist brings us into the territory of overlapping with anything? Or do we think as an inclusion, it is suitable?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. There is certainly pieces of legislation that do talk to these issues, both state and Commonwealth. And I've done a little bit of research just recently in terms of that. It certainly isn't an easy path in terms of managing those types of languages. It certainly, it goes through the tribunals or an equal opportunity or equal rights commission is where they end up. They're a complaint that goes through a tribunal. So in terms of criminalising what's been suggested there, it's certainly difficult to know without that legal advice about where that may fall. Including it in the exposure draft is probably, we've got plenty of time. And I would think that if it was contritor law, it would be picked up through that certification process, through the legal qualifying that we will need to do anyway. So certainly in terms of our exposure, I don't think that there's a massive risk in including it here. Certainly it allows the public to give their feedback on it. And then certainly anything that may clash with with other pieces of legislation will be caught by that process.
Do you have a question?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I just wondered, looking at those clauses, D and E, they use quite general, offensive, abusive. Does putting a word in that clause that is quite a specific type of abusive or insulting then render the more general words in the clause weaker? Because we're not including other more specific types of abuse in that clause? Sorry, insulting language in that clause?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. I don't think it does. I think the intent of it is to be quite broad. However, inclusion, including the word racist, it may require a definition of such and we would probably draw from the articulated positions of either the state or the Commonwealth in terms of what racist is. And that could be well included in the draft as well before it goes out to public.
Okay, are there any other questions? So can I, yep, one more.
Sorry, through the mayor. Just following up on councillor Churey's question. I mean, it seems to me, I'm immediately going, well, can we include misogynist? Can we include, can we include? Because it does seem that by highlighting one particular word, we are softening around the other words or saying, but those ones are okay. So I don't feel comfortable with highlighting one word and not including the others. I'm happy to include the others. No.
So I'm going to come back to the mover and second and ask if you are comfortable with the amendment.
I think comfortable to include the amendment so we can have some debate. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So would the mover wish to speak?
Just to understand, so it has been accepted by the, by the, yep, yep. Okay, so it's four was part of the substantive motion? Yep, okay, that's great. Look, I'll just say a few words why I put this amendment. I think it's important if you read clause 2037, one A, it does talk about offensive, abusive, insultive language. And I think it's well fitted in those two clauses to talk about racist language. Again, I point out, we're a very diverse community. The city of Darabban should signal to its community that it has zero tolerance in relation to racism, which is rising in Australian society. And it's rising unfortunately in the community. Putting that in our local laws rather than just having it in a policy statement gives it much more gravitas. And I think that it's important that it fits into these important instruments of council. And therefore I think it's most appropriate for us to put that out for community consultation. I invite councillors, if they want to include other things, by all means, consider that. The local laws are important and if we want to signal to our community, not just from a policy perspective, but from a local laws perspective, that certain behaviour on council land, abusive behaviour, is not tolerated, whether it's racism, whether it's misogyny and other things. So I would encourage councillors, when this comes back to us, to consider that. But I'm happy that the racism is in there. Again, I present that statistical reality that over 60% of our community is from a non-English speaking background and many of them would have faced racism in their lifetime.
Okay, I'm going to come back to Julia as the original mover of the motion, given it's now changed, if you want to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess, yeah, notwithstanding councillor Greco's invitation to us all to include all of the words that we could include, I think we need to test this with the community. We know there are many more important issues across our community. Racism is an issue, of course it is. Homophobia is an issue for some people. The murder of women is an issue that is rife in our community. So there are many things in terms of discrimination and harassment that we could be including in these local laws. We need to test the legality of some of those and how they exist alongside other legislation, which Shannon has indicated will happen as part of the review. So I think for now, we have, this is a starting point. We are going out to consultation. We have a chance to debate this further ourselves and include wider inclusions if we do want to do that. And I guess in terms of some other ways that I've seen it done, it could be that, you know, you have a list that's included for all of the things that you mean in terms of discrimination. That's how we do it in policies at work, for example. So I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to soften or water, feel that we're softening and watering down right now, but we are going out to the community to consult. It's a very important piece of work. So I think hopefully we can get on with it and if we get that strong feedback from the community, we'll take that into account. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any other speakers to the motion? No? Okay, well, then we're going to go to the vote. So I want to ask for those who are voting in favour of the amended motion, to raise your hands. Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you. So we're at nine point seven. So nine point seven is amendment C21D, consideration of the panel report and adoption. Do you councils have any questions in relation to this item? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move to debate. I'll remind you, once we enter debate, that there will be no further questions. Do we have a mover for this motion? I've got councillor Greco. Okay, do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Jelly? Does the mover wish to speak?
Yeah, just very briefly. It's important that this motion, or this report's really important for council. Just to give some context to the report, what's happened is that the council has received a report back from a planning committee panel, where the planning panel has accepted council's rationale for strategic justification to shift our open space levy from two, three or four percent to a flat five percent, which will make us consistent with many other councils. And so where this work is at is that the panel has recommended for council to adopt the recommendation of a five percent open space levy. If council approve this here tonight, then the next step in the process will be that it will be sent to the minister for ratification. Hopefully the minister will ratify this quickly so that then it comes into effect and so that therefore any new development will actually attract a five percent open space levy where appropriate. I want to thank the officers for getting us to this point. It's been a long journey. This process started originally in 2019 or 18, I believe, where we've had to withdraw a previous application. And then we set up a new application, a new process, a new amendment process. And we've reached this point and it's high time that we get this through and hopefully the planning minister will sign off on it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
I'll reserve, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Are there any other speakers? Okay, we're going to move into the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. And once again, carried unanimously. So that's fantastic. We're going to move along. I'm just going to give the tech people a heads up that after this item, we're just going to have a very short comfort break. Two items? Apology, two more items and then we're going to have a short break. Okay, so we are at nine point eight, contract award for KP Hardman Reserve Pavilion. I've jumped ahead of myself, apologies. Yeah, I'm just trying to find it on here. There we go. Okay, do councillors have any questions in relation to this motion? Yeah, great. Okay, well, if there's no questions, we'll enter into debate. And as you know, once we enter the debate, there should be no further questions. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Selkos? Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor O'Brien? Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
I'll keep it as brief as possible. KP Hardman Reserve is home to the Trope Hockey Club. As we all know, there's 21 teams there currently and they have teams of all ages and all skill levels. It's great to see that the officers' work is now coming to fruition and we will see a new pavilion hopefully soon. Thank you.
Does the second wish to speak? Councillor O'Brien?
Just very briefly, Mayor. Just to say, it's great to see this work progressing. Obviously, we've come into this very late in the piece as a new councillor group. But these types of projects that are looking to improve the diversity and inclusion of our sports club and other facilities are things that we hold very dear in Darabban. And so I'm grateful to see this one is where it's at. And I look forward to seeing others come before us in the years ahead. And we know we'll have some prioritisation work to do there. There's some that are on the slate already that are really important. I'll mention Bill Larry Oval in South Ward as one that had been progressing and has come on the waitlist of sorts, but it's progressing in its own ways, a bit more slowly than initially anticipated. But these sports clubs are so important to our community. They help bring people together. And the more that we can do to include everybody and have them feel part of our community, the better we'll be. So that's all I've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Any other speakers? Councillor Churey?
Thank you, Mayor. It is really exciting to be participating in this decision to progress this magnificent project. And I don't think I could have put it better myself, councillor O'Brien, when you highlight how, or through you, Mayor, when councillor O'Brien highlights how important our sports clubs are in our community and to be able to support them with some fantastic facilities on the border of mine. And councillor Selkos's ward, of course, is a bonus as well. So it is really an exciting time in this process and I look forward to seeing this project progress with keen interest. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there's no other speakers. We will move to the vote and I'd just like to just say that I also am very supportive and excited about the progress of this particular piece of work. So can I say all those in favour, please raise your hand? That's unanimously carried. Thank you. Okay, now nine point nine is the list of flow power. It's a neighbourhood battery at two Wing Grove Street in Elphington. Yep, councillor Dimitriatus?
Mayor, I'd like to move the motion with a slight amendment.
Okay, can we bring that amendment up on the screen, please? And while that's happening.
I just wonder if there are any questions.
Yeah, that, while that's happening, I was just going to ask if there are any questions before we talk to the motion.
Sorry, Mayor, that's not the full amendment. So A is different. I'm pretty sure I circulated it.
So do we have the latest amendment somewhere handy?
Maybe we can have that break.
Yep, okay. I think, let's just take our break now. Just, is five minutes enough? Yeah, so we'll come back at seven fifty-six when we hopefully have the motion available at that point. Oh, procedural motion, sorry. Oh, dear. Oh, dear.
I'm happy to move a procedural motion, Mayor, for us to take a shorter term in five minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we don't need to vote. Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, listen, do we need to vote? Yeah, everyone voting? Is everyone happy for the break? Okay, good. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Inception by a fabulous group of local volunteers. This project will benefit Darabin, the whole community. With homes connecting to a neighbourhood battery such as the new Althington battery that we're proposing to be built here in the next year, more communities will be able to harness the power of rooftop solar generation while reducing their bills and cutting emissions. This project really is a win-win for everyone. Thank you to all the stakeholders for all their efforts in supporting this project, and that's the community, all the volunteers, the state government for their funding, the council officers for working with village power, and of course, village power itself and flow power. I really look forward to the new battery being delivered next year at Two Wingrove Street, Althington. Thanks.
Thank you. Does the second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right.
Any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? councillor Greco?
May I have a little amendment I'd like councillors to consider? Again, it was distributed this afternoon to the governance services and to the CEO, to councillors and to councillor Dimitriades.
Do we have that available? Can you tell us what the amendment was? You said it was little. Is it something we can add in here?
Can you repeat that, ma'am?
Could you tell us what the amendment is? You said it was small, so is it something that we can add in on the screen?
Yeah, it was circulated, so...
It was an email at 12:35pm.
Is there a copy of it somewhere? Yep, they found it. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask the officers a question about this amendment? If that's okay.
Yeah, although we haven't got it yet.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
The time that it circulated was 12:35 today.
One minute, I'm told. Okay. So councillor Dimitriades, did you want to ask a question before you decide whether you accept?
Yes, please, mayor.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask the officers the impact of this amendment to the progress of the project.
Through you, mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor. Reading the amendment on the screen, we think it's a fair and reasonable ask of Alesey. We don't think it would have any material impact on the lease that's being proposed.
Okay, so can I ask if you're the movement's second or are willing to accept this amendment?
Can I just ask one more question? Sorry, mayor. Sorry. Objective evidence... Just through you, I wanted to ask the officers. Because this is a new project that hasn't been developed in other... anywhere in Australia. Would it be difficult to obtain objective evidence?
Look, we would put that phrase into the annual request. I would expect Alesey to interpret it as sort of seeking quantifiable data to come back. And I would imagine for this kind of activity where you're providing power, quantifiable data would be able to be obtained.
Thank you, mayor. I'll accept the amendment.
Okay, and the second?
I accept it.
Okay. Does anyone else have... Does anyone want to speak against the motion? Anyone else speaking on the motion? Yes?
Thank you. So, yes, again, I guess this is a project we're coming late into as a new group of councillors. But it has been underway since the 2016 to 2020 term, as far as I know. Somebody has kept a bit of an eye on this. And that was as part of the climate emergency work that was undertaken and kicked off by the council at that stage. So, given that was then and this is now, a lot of time has passed since then. So I would, yeah, again, just like to state the appreciation for the vision and tenacity of those involved in bringing us to this point. Darabin has a history of supporting innovative projects like this to support renewable energy in its own facilities through power purchase agreements for renewable electricity, the amazing Solar Savers program that's benefited so many of our residents, and working in partnership with others. So it's great to see this new project coming online to support the decentralised and secure source of energy in one of our neighbourhoods. This is in line with the Climate Emergency Plan, which includes a commitment to, and I'm going to just read that directly, advocating and fostering partnerships to ensure we have a secure and resilient energy system, e.g. community battery projects and leading neighbourhood-scale change projects. So I look forward to the community benefiting from this particular programme and to us learning lots from it and potentially delivering more of these across the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Greco?
Look, just very briefly, and I'm happy that the mover and the second have accepted the amendment. Just in terms of the amendment, why I've included that, I think it's important that we get rigorous reports. It's important for the integrity of these important projects. As we know, it's unfortunate that people are starting to question a lot of the renewable energy sources. So it's important that we get evidence-based, rigorous information on an annual basis to actually show how important and how effective these particular projects are. Because that's the future, in a sense. The other thing too is that, the other part of the amendment was that, I know that's going to have a benefit locally in that local neighbourhood, but I'm hoping that it'll extend beyond that neighbourhood and reach out to the broader Darabin community. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that will be reported on. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the vote now. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's unanimously passed, so thank you. Okay, we've got a number of property matters now. We're going to hopefully move through these relatively quickly. So 9.1 is to do with the leasing of part of Bundara Park for the construction, operation and maintenance of a telecommunications monopole. Is anyone willing to move this motion? Councillor Arturi, do I have a second? Councillor Jelly, does the mover wish to speak?
Very briefly. The lease was previously endorsed by council in September 22 and it was key terms of that agreement were put out to community engagement endorsed by council, but there was an issue in the recording of that. So further engagement was required on the correct lease terms. Council gave public notice in August this year. It's my understanding that no submissions were received and the report's recommending to proceed with the lease. And on that basis, I commend the motion to the chamber.
Does the second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Is there anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Okay, we might just move straight to the vote then. All those in favour, raise your hand. That's unanimously carried. Thank you. The next item, sale of minor assets is at 182 to 184 High Street and 1 Butler Street, Northgood. Yes, councillor Salkos?
I'd like to move an alternative motion.
Okay, can we have that one up on the screen? Okay. Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Dimitriades, sorry. Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
I will just keep it brief. This ultimate motion has come after the hearing of submissions meeting that we had. The Samira showed interest in purchasing the land that we're about to sell and I think we should give them that opportunity. Thanks.
The second wish to speak?
Nothing further to add, mayor.
Are there any councillors opposed to this motion? Okay, so we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favour. And that's carried unanimously. 9.12, again, sale of minor assets, this one, 6 Tasman Street and 5 Bishop Street, Preston. Any questions of the officers on this one? No. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor O'Brien, do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Jelly, does the mover wish to speak? No. Does the second wish to speak? No. Are there any councillors who want to speak in opposition? Let's move straight to the vote. All in favour? That's carried unanimously. 9.13, sale of minor assets, 27 George Street Reservoir. Again, any questions of officers? Do we have a mover for the motion? Councillor Salkos, do we have a second? Councillor Dimitriades? Does the mover wish to speak?
No, thank you, mayor.
Second wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Okay, we'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 9.14, sale of minor assets at 4/1 Ferser Street, Preston. Any questions to officers? Is there anyone who would be prepared to put this motion forward? Councillor Jelly? Seconded? Councillor Salkos? Does the mover wish to speak?
No, thank you, mayor.
Second?
I'll reserve my right.
Anyone wanting to speak against the motion? Okay, we're going to move straight to the vote again. All those in favour, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Item 10. So we're moving on to notices of motion. Oh, sorry, item 10. No item 10. Is that correct? Okay, no items to be tabled. We'll move on to item 11, which is notices of motion. The first one, 1.1, is relating to the Reservoir Leisure Centre advocacy motion. And this is councillor Salkos. So do you wish to move the motion as it appears on the screen? Coming. There we go.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Arturi, does the mover wish to speak?
I do. So I'll start by saying that Reservoir Leisure Centre has come up quite a few times in our discussions over the last couple of weeks. I think this motion is quite self-explanatory that we're looking at funding from our state and federal governments. I did want to note that, however, I know that our federal member for Cooper wrote to the previous CEO and mayor about federal grants which the previous council didn't apply for and we could have received up to $15 million for Reservoir Leisure Centre. Two centres in neighbouring councils received over $5 million. So I think going ahead, having the support from our state and federal governments means this project can actually happen a lot sooner. So I hope you can all support it.
Does a second wish to speak?
I reserve my right, ma'am.
Is there anyone wanting to speak? Any other councillors? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. I have an amendment that I circulated earlier this morning at 10 o'clock. I'd like councillors to consider it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to second that motion? Sorry, does the original movement second to accept? No. Okay, so lapses. All right, so we're back to the original motion? Okay, so apparently we go back to that amended one and ask if there is a second? So, okay, now it lapses.
Sorry, mayor, I think I'll second this one for the sake of hearing councillor Greco's rationale in the debate.
Okay. So we have a second? So it's not... Okay, so now it's an amendment. So now councillor Greco gets to speak? As the mover? Yep.
Thank you councillor Jelly for seconding the amendment. Look, as we know, the Reservoir Leisure Centre, we've been talking about that for the last eight years here in the previous two councils. I welcome this motion of seeking funding from the state and federal governments. We know that for a major project of this size to take place, it would need state and federal funding. And also, we know that in order for it actually to happen and to happen in a way that's really fast, is that a great formula would be a third of the funding coming from the federal government, a third of the funding coming from the state government, and a third of the funding obviously coming from council and the council being the main driver behind the project. We've heard our CEO actually suggest that sort of formula, which will help to move this sort of project along. And like that, it would actually be a real collaborative project between the three levels of government, state, federal and local government. As has been mentioned before, the federal government and the state government have supported similar projects in other municipalities. Let's put it out there to our state and federal tiers of government to see whether they're able to support a project of this and to enter into those discussions. And like that, all tiers of government will have a sense of ownership of making something happen within the city of Darabin. So I really urge councillors to support this motion so that we can approach our state and federal colleagues to support something like this and start a conversation around each of us having a vested interest in making this project to be realised in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. Does the second wish to speak?
Yes, I do, mayor. Thank you very much. I think it's worthy of us actually exploring the possibility of our federal and state counterparts putting in an equal contribution to this. I don't see there's any particular harm in including that in the letter. But I leave it to councillor Salkos to provide an explanation of, you know, where there might be, you know, something missing in this rationale. Thank you.
So is there anyone who'd like to speak against this motion?
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank councillor Greco for his keen interest in this project over a number of years. And happy to see that he and councillor Jelly as well support in principle councillor Salkos's notice of motion here. And I also agree with him that it is an important project on all of our minds and indeed on the minds of the community. I just think that to write to our federal and state colleagues with the idea of a one-third mix per level of government, I think might just lock us in a bit. And I think that flexibility is important. But I also agree with councillor Greco that ownership from all levels of government is really important. But I just, you know, without getting too optimistic about things, foresee the situation where a level of government might want to tip in more than a third. And I don't know about other councillors, but I wouldn't say no to that. So I think that you don't want to kind of lock ourselves in too much. I think that advocating for the support of the state and federal governments because they should take ownership of it as well is really important. But for the reasons that I've outlined, I think that councillor Salkos's substantive motion should be the one that we go with this evening. Thanks, mayor.
Someone else wish to speak to the motion? Okay, so we'll vote on this amended motion. Those in favour, raise your hand. Okay, councillor Greco. Those against? Okay, so that's councillor Arturi, councillor Dimitriades, councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Salkos and councillor O'Laurs. So I believe we now go back to the previous motion. Was there anyone else who wants to speak to this motion? Let's proceed to the vote. So those in favour of this motion, please raise your hand. Okay, and that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Okay, 11.2, Two Wingrove Street, Althington. This was put together by councillor Dimitriades, who now has put forward an amendment to that motion. Is that the correct?
And I think we just have to remove R1C.
Ah, yep. Wasn't it to be named number two?
Oh, no, there already is a one, a number two.
Ah, yeah. Is the date?
Yes, the date is correct. Oh, no, sorry. The date is February.
February was on the latest one?
Yep. So the February council meeting. It was the 24th of February.
No, no, she's changed it to February in the latest version, so we need... What's the date in February?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Oh, is it the twenty-seventh?
Sorry, just hang on a moment. I've got some... Just get some advice.
However, C is not... Yeah.
Sorry. Can you show it to Emily? Emily?
Emily does have it. I just need it to go to governance.
Okay. Okay, we're just forwarding on the correct sentence. Do you want me to read it out?
Yep, you can read it out.
So is this instead of number two?
Instead of C that's there, it should say...
Well, two says for the avoidance of doubt, so we're repeating ourselves.
It just says for the avoidance of doubt. Other currently delegated functions.
Okay, so apparently we've got a C that's supposed to say for the avoidance of doubt. Other minor delegated... Other currently mine...
Other currently delegated.
Other currently delegated functions relating to this site are unchanged. You okay with that, councillor Dimitriades?
If I may, just for the sake of the gallery and also for the councillors. So what's going in as C is the original minute that was in the council resolution. So what councillor Dimitriades has is that council notes the decision of the 27th of May, which is 1A, B and C. And you'll note there's a slight difference, that number two now replace, in effect replaces C. So resolves for the avoidance of doubt only operational matters relating to this site are to remain within the CEO's delegated authority. So you'll see the difference between the two. So just to be very clear, because you can't change the minute at the council, so ABC is still correct. And councillor Dimitriades now has a two. And three becomes, two becomes three. Thank you.
Okay, so... Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Greco? Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and thank you for allowing me to amend the motion. So over the past few years, there has been significant public interest about the site at Two Wingrove Street in Althington. And for anyone that may not have been following the issue over the past few years, a brief timeline of what occurred in the last term is as follows. So in November 2022, council entered Two Wingrove Street in Althington and 14 of the traders were removed from the site. In December 2022, VCAT ruled that businesses could re-enter the site. And on the 25th of January 2023, council delegated authority to the CEO to determine the short to medium term uses of Two Wingrove Street, Althington. On the 25th of March this year, a petition with 130 signatures was tabled to council. Now I'm told this petition has over 1,500 signatures, which was asking council to support Australia's first electric vehicle hub in Althington. And on the 27th of May 2024, is council resolved as per the motion in 1A, B and C to direct all future decisions relating to the short, medium and long term use of the site at Two Wingrove Street to council meetings. However, the CEO continues to have some delegated powers above and beyond those that are of an operational nature, which is why I've also been advised here tonight to add a new point two in this motion. And that's so council can make clear that for the avoidance of doubt, only operational matters relating to this site are to remain within the CEO's delegated authority, which is as per the legislation, the Local Government Act. So this is also in the interest of public transparency and accountability. So that's the first two parts of the motion. In the third part, I recall that on the 24th of June 2024, the council meeting, the majority of the previous councillors voted against undertaking broader community consultation for stage one of the future of Two Wingrove Street, Althington. And in light of all these events that have unfolded over the past few years, community members have continued to raise concerns about the future of this site. So this is why in my norm in point three, I'm also proposing that council include broader community consultation specifically as part of stage one of master planning for the site at Two Wingrove Street. So thank you.
Okay, does the second wish to speak?
Oh, is it my right to speak?
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this motion? Councillor Jelly?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much councillor Dimitriades for putting forward this motion. It's unfortunate timing, I think, really, that I feel quite unprepared and uninformed in order to make the decision in full good faith of our community. But we haven't yet had a briefing about the full extent of everything that's going on at Two Wingrove Street in Althington. Um, but we haven't yet had a briefing about, um, the full extent of everything that's going on at, um, Two Wingrove Street in Elphington. Notwithstanding the opportunity that we had this afternoon to ask some questions of officers, um, about that. Um, and so it's, it's not, uh, I'm not casting judgment on the merit of, um, of this particular motion, just stating that I don't think that we're, um, in a position to have all the information, um, available to us in order to make a fully informative decision at this point in time. Um, and so unfortunately, I think I'm going to need to abstain from this motion. As I said, I'm not casting judgment on the merits. Um, I, I just feel that it's, um, uh, not, uh, not good governance, um, to, to engage in a, um, a forthright decision um, on this at this point.
Okay, are there other people who would wish to speak, um, about this motion? Okay, so if there's no further debate, I will, uh, councillor Greco, no. Um, if there's no further debate, I will put this item to the vote. So all those in favour? And, uh, those again, oh, sorry, keep your hands up. Um, councillor Acheary, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster and councillor Selkis and councillor O'laras. Um, and those against councillor Jelly and, um, you know.
I'm abstaining, thank you, ma'am.
Abstaining, thank you, okay. All right, uh. Eleven point three, we've got vegetation management. Um, this is, uh, uh, councillor O'Brien is, uh, is going to speak to this one.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, so I have, uh, a number of amendments to this that have been circled.
Oh, I'm happy to second it, yeah.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so a number of amendments based on further feedback from people, um, uh, noting, um, I guess the, the body of work that we've all got ahead of us as well and, and some of the things that we can combine it with. Um, so I would like to move one further amendment before we go on, if I may, just whatever the process is about that.
I'm sorry, um, you don't want to move this, it's not this amendment?
There's one line in it that I've received further feedback on that apparently is, yeah, slight amendment to ideally.
Sure. Yep, can you do it now?
Yes, so if we can scroll down just to item six and just deleting that, um, just for clarity, um, based on some further feedback of the type of consultation that is valuable and, um, useful in the time that we've got.
Okay, so do, do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Greco, all right, we've done that already? And now? Right, okay, so now would you like to speak more to that motion?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, so yes, I brought this notice, notice of motion forward, given the various issues around vegetation, maintenance and management across the municipality. Um, in simple terms, apart from their visual amenity, we need good quality vegetation across the whole of Darabin to help reduce heat effects and to improve nature corridors for our local wildlife. As we swelter through the heat of yesterday and today, we have a stark reminder of how necessary this is for us all and for our wildlife. In a report released in recent days, Darabin was ranked as one of the worst five local government areas alongside Melbourne, Mary Beck, Greater Dandenong and Casey, with the group dubbed as some of the sweatiest cities. Uh, we know from other studies that East Preston and East Reservoir and here in Central Ward, um, there are particular issues with greater heat risk, um, because of lesser tree coverage. And sometimes this is then further compounded by poor quality housing issues in some areas. We can and should be doing better in this regard, I believe. Um, we hear of developers not heeding the requirements of vegetation protection on construction sites, resulting in the loss of mature trees that are, provide local amenity and biodiversity. We know council is doing fantastic work, sometimes in partnership with others, revegetating our creeks and parks. But sometimes there are issues with the survival of plantings, um, which ultimately represents wasted resources, including time, money, water and the plants themselves. Um, so I think to residents, it can sometimes seem like we have a bit of a piecemeal approach to vegetation, maintenance and management. And based on all of the various touchpoints with this issue across council, you could see how that would happen. So I just think right now we have a great opportunity to identify ways to improve how we do this as we review our general local laws and as we head into development of the new council plan. So I'm basically requesting that the officers consider the various issues identified in the notice of motion and seek opportunities to improve how we get more positive outcomes through the mechanisms available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and would the second like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, yes, very briefly, look, I really welcome this notice of motion. Um, I think it's an important one and actually as a way of actually trying, um, informing, um, or directing in a, in a general sense, our, our officers in the development of the, the council plan. As has been mentioned, um, um, it's really important that, um, in our city, particularly the northern part of our city, where on a day like this, where it's over forty degrees, it's, it's more felt in the northern part of our city than in the southern part of our city. That's partly due or substantially due, um, to the less tree coverage, um, in the northern part of our city. There've been studies to actually show this and I think that a, um, uh, a review of our vegetation, uh, policy and how we go about that is, is both of welcome. The other thing too, why it would be really welcome is that, as we know, there have been targets established for Darabin in terms of its growth, uh, where there's going to be over seventy thousand dwellings over the, the next few decades. So that will actually put a lot of pressure on where our vegetation is going to be and also the quality of vegetation that we're going to have in our city in order for us to, um, um, confront days like today and, um, where there's, um, a lot of heat and, um, in order to ensure that, um, our city is well suited and well, and well adapted uh, to confronting a particular weather extremes as we've, as, as we are facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other councillors wish to speak? Okay, so we might move on to the vote. Um, all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, uh, eleven point four, revisiting Your Street, Your Say, Group B. Um, um, this motion, amended motion is put forward by councillor Dimitriatus.
Sorry, ma'am, that's, that's not the, our latest amended motion. No, sorry, ma'am, that's not the email.
Mayor, could I move a procedural motion to seek in a German for five minutes so that we can get the correct version up? Is that, if that's necessary?
Sure, okay, thank you. Sorry, um, someone like to second that? Oh, councillor O'Brien, all in favour? Okay, unanimous, five minutes. Thank you, councillors, we are back. Before we jump into this, can I just, um, suggest we might need a procedural motion to extend the meeting? I'm hoping not by very much, but probably if we can do a thirty. Uh, so, um, go ahead.
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, versus, uh, councillor Selkis, sorry. Um, and seconded by, by councillor O'Brien, and that's a thirty, thirty minute extension?
Up to thirty minutes.
Okay, up to thirty minutes, very nice. Thank you, thank you. All right, um, so over to you. Oh, we've done? Oh, sorry, all those in favour? Thank you, um. Okay, over to you, Emily, uh, councillor Dimitriatus, sorry.
Um, thank you, ma'am. So at the council meeting earlier this year on the eighth of, just January twenty twenty-four, council decided to prioritise the Your Street, Your Say, Group B projects, and I quote, 'to ensure that children's safety is in the top five list of priorities to allow children to safely walk, cro- uh, cycle, take public transport or get dropped off at their school, kindergarten or childcare centre.' However, at the council meeting on the twenty-fourth of June twenty twenty-four, the previous council voted to reprioritise these projects. So the top priority projects were those listed in point four, now the new point four, um, of my motion. From community consultation, these projects received the less support.
Councillor Dimitriatus, I don't believe we've got a second.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Emma, continue on.
No worries. Um, so what was prioritised was the top priorities listed in point four of my, uh, amended motion. And from community consultation, these projects received the least, uh, less support from community members, such that the project for separated bike lanes on Victoria Road before Separation Street received thirty-four percent support from the community. Removal of parking on South Crescent to make way for bike riders received sixty-seven support. And separated bike lines on Victoria Road after Separation Street received fifty-five percent support. Given the results of community consultation for the Your Street, Your Say, Group B area, they do not reflect the council's current list of, uh, priority projects. The, um, they, they do not reflect the, as, yes, so the results of community consultation, sorry, don't reflect the council's current priority list. This motion aims to reprioritise the projects that, um, so that greater support uh, by the community is actually prioritised as a top priority project. The projects with the most support from the community was those that are concerned safety around schools, kindergartens and childcare centres, such as the raised zebra crossing outside Thornbury Kindergarten on Newcastle Street, which received ninety percent support. The raised zebra crossing outside Perry Street Childcare received eighty-six percent support. The raised zebra, the raised intersections at Jones Street and Colin Street outside Thornbury High School received eighty-four percent support. And the raised zebra crossing outside Thornbury High on Matisse Street received eighty-eight percent support. These projects were deprioritised by the previous council. Therefore, what my norm does tonight is just call on councillors to listen to the community's concerns and make priority the projects which received the most support. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, would the second like to speak to the motion?
I reserve my right.
Is there anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Jelly?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I'm rising in opposition to this motion, uh, as this is something that I have, um, I speak, I feel very passionately about and have advocated very strongly for, um, over the past, um, three years. Um, in particular, I'd like to note that, um, there are elements of this motion that I feel are actually misleading to the public, particularly around, um, the full extent of what was, um, decided and discussed at the eighth of January meeting. Um, and I also note that, um, the elements outlined in point four are not clear and are misleading in themselves, but are clarified later on in the motion. So I think the motion within itself presents its own, um, governance issues in terms of, um, the clarity that it's provided. Um, and so while this appears to present, um, that these four projects have more community support than others, I would say that that evidence is actually quite selective and does not represent the full picture of what the community has told us. And what they have told us through all stages of community consultation is that they want to feel safe when they're riding their bikes. And this includes children who are riding along our key strategic cycling corridors, which include South Crescent, which is a key route to, um, and around West Garth Primary School. An unfortunate fact, um, in our community's councillors, um, is that people who ride bikes are disproportionately represented in crashes resulting in deaths and serious injury on Darabin's roads. And I'd like to call in particular out to the, um, the proposal here to, uh, remove the, uh, proposal for a safe crossing outside North, Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre, which was the site of a cyclist's death in two thousand and eighteen, a tragic and preventable death. And we need to stand up as councillors and ensure that there are no further deaths of people who ride bikes, particularly on that dangerous stretch of road. There is increased traffic around Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre, as most residents have informed me and made complaints to me about the danger they feel. And I myself have tried to navigate my way through there and it's blatantly unsafe and it would be irresponsible of this council to go back on what our promise was to the community to make them feel safe, regardless of what mode of transport they use.
Are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor Acheary?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, first, can I, um, commend councillor Dimitriatus for her, um, tireless advocacy and, uh, community engagement? Um, not only on this, but on broader issues, but on this in the context of this notice of motion. Um, we as councillors speak often about engaging with the community and responding to community needs and all that kind of stuff. And I think, uh, this is a perfect example of this. Um, I understand, um, uh, councillor Jelly's comments in relation to some of the perceived ambiguities in the motion. But, uh, I think what is not ambiguous and what is quite clear is what the, uh, community's response has been to Your Street, Your Say, Group B and the community consultation that went around, um, with, uh, that. Um, and I think, um, in terms of, um, what is irresponsible or not, of what is irresponsible or not, what would be irresponsible is to ignore the results of that survey and the community consultation that went along with that. And I don't know whether we should be necessarily playing one group's people's safety off another, but just to make the point that the safety of children going to and from school, whether they ride their bikes, whether they get driven there, whether they walk there, that, I think, should be paramount, and that's exactly what this notice of motion does. So I think it is a very important motion that's before the chamber. I would encourage all councillors to consider it very, very carefully. And I again thank councillor Dimitriatus for her advocacy in relation to this, the content of the notice of motion. I commend the motion to the chamber.
Councillor Sangster?
Yep. Okay, thank you so much. I would also like to speak against the motion. Research by experts repeatedly shows that up to eighty percent of more Australians would ride a bike if they felt safe to do so. The onus is on us as council to start investing in safer cycling infrastructure to enable those eighty percent of people who want to ride to work and school for social and life reasons to be able to get around. Also, our Darabben community overwhelmingly wants council to act on the climate emergency. One third of carbon emissions in Darabben originate from transport. The easiest, fastest, cheapest way to help residents reduce their carbon footprint is through safer cycling infrastructure. This motion says it intends to support children to walk and ride and get dropped off safely, but South Crescent is a popular route for families riding to West Garth Primary. So it seems clear that this motion is not about enabling children to get to school safely, but instead seems to be about ensuring the significant cycling projects do not go ahead. Evidence shows that when we make our roads safer for people who ride bicycles, safety improves for all users. So there is a multiplying effect in the benefit in investing in safe cycling, which we don't say in the same way with raised pedestrian crossings. So this notion of motion which is speaking about the safety of children is paramount, I would disagree with that as a premise.
Any other speakers? Councillor O'Brien?
Again, rising mayor through you to just speak in opposition. I think councillor Jolly and councillor Sangster have covered most of what needs to be said, but I think the other element that we have here is we've been progressing this work over a period of time. We're now being asked to, again, stop or reverse some of the previous decisions that have been taken. I note with the current round of Your Street Your Say that's out, people are asking, I've seen questions online about why, why are you consulting on this when you haven't already delivered on other elements of previous rounds? So I think the community feels a little bit like we're doing not enough, or we're doing too little, too, in terms of time, moving too slowly. So to change our mind again now and put everything back on the drawing board, I think doesn't make sense. And the broader results of the consultation, trust councillor Jolly's knowledge in that space in terms of lots of results or lots of consultation has already happened in this space. So I think we need to move on. We need a, we need a mix of pedestrian and cycling projects. Both are important. We've had conversations in the last week about similar issues around Thornbury High School. We have lots of schools, we have lots of students, we have lots of parents riding their bikes, bringing their children to schools or scooting to school. Safety is paramount for everybody, and I think we just need to get on and do the work that we have been saying that we will do. There's lots of opportunity to bring these other ones in over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, before I go to councillor Dimitriatus for a write-off reply, I think I'd just add myself that I think it's unfortunate that this looks to be playing off two different really important priorities. And I think there's a limited pool of money that's set aside for this particular project. There are additional active transport funds that are regularly available, and I think, like, I think this doesn't underplay at all the need for us to seriously invest and find how we can invest in better bike routes and bike paths. But I do think, and I also would say that I don't think this was a perfect piece of consultation, but it was the piece of consultation that happened. And I think for mine, I think we have to go with children's safety first and with what the community actually prioritise first. So, but I will now throw to councillor Dimitriatus for her write-up reply, if you want to.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate what you've said because I was also going to mention that as well. So we, so given the results of community consultation clearly show that the community members want to see safety projects around schools, kindergartens and childcare centres as a priority, I believe these should be the top priority projects for Darabben. It just so happens that what was prioritised by the previous council happened to be bike lanes, and there is a limited amount of funding for these particular projects. However, like the mayor said, this doesn't mean we shouldn't invest in bike lanes and advocate for active transports. There are other funding opportunities which the mayor also outlined, available for active transport, that council can certainly tap into. For example, I know the federal government is currently accepting applications for projects that support active transport, and I think this would be a great opportunity for council to apply for some of these. So I also wanted to just outline that according to the T A C statistics, pedestrians make up fifteen percent of the total number of road deaths each year, with the most common types of crashes resulting from crossing the road. So I think it's important that we do prioritise these projects, and therefore in the interests of children and pedestrian's safety, I do ask all councillors to kindly support my motion. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to the vote. So if I can ask for all those in favour of the motion to raise your hand. Okay, so we've got councillor Turri, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco, councillor Salkus and councillor Alaris. Those against, councillor Jolly, councillor O'Brien and councillor Sangster. Thank you. We will move to item eleven point five. This is, I'm presuming councillor Greco, you're going to put this motion forward. Is there a second? Oh, have we got it up? So if I can just check if there is a second for this motion. Councillor Turri? Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you councillor Turri for seconding the motion. This notice of motion is divided into four parts, and I'll quickly just go through that. The first part is in Malaysia to the Reservoir Leisure Centre. We know that there's been a community consultation that took place in September. Also, we know that our officers are doing some analysis of that feedback. And the next step in relation to the R L C is to receive a report that was supposed to come in December, but unfortunately it hasn't, a report that looks at the, what the next steps are and what the options are for council in progressing this important initiative. One thing is to ask for money from the other tiers of government, but this motion actually moves that work along from a council perspective. The second part of the motion deals with aged care, and basically in relation to this part of the motion is just a reaffirmation, given that this is a new council with seven new councillors, and that this new council reaffirms that it will continue to provide in-house services. And this is very important because many councils in Victoria are moving down the road of privatising or no longer doing aged care services. And so I think it would be important for council to reaffirm that we will currently continue with providing in-house quality aged care services. The third part of the motion deals with hard waste, and again, all that's, all that's been proposed here is to receive a report about the proposed changes in relation to a trial, and that, given that when we decided, when we talked about this earlier this year, I believe, the community was very much divided on whether to go for a trial or stick with the, the system that we had, where it was an annual bulk hard waste collection. I think it's good that a report comes back to us, re-looks at that information, and also looks at other options that we could adopt in regards to hard waste. And the final part of the motion deals with a mid-year budget review. It's a practice that's been used in the past, where we come back at the middle of the year, look at how we're travelling with the budget that we adopted in July, and look at some of the financial constraints, and look at some of the pressures on the budget, and also for councillors to consider, given that we've got a new council, there may be some reprioritisation on certain projects. So this will give councillors an opportunity, and also officers, to come back to us with proposals that they may have, given budget pressures, to re-look at our budget, and if need be, there may not be any need, to then revisit some of the budget items so that we ensure financial sustainability and financial prudence. Thank you.
Second, you'd like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right.
Would anyone like to speak?
Can I just make a suggestion? Are we able to vote in this, to take this vote each point one at a time? I believe that's a decision at your discretion under.
Yeah, is there a particular one you pull out, or do you want to do all three separately?
I think probably best to do, is it four points, to do four points, all four points separately. At your discretion, I believe, ma'am.
Okay, can we just have one lot of discussion, debate, and then, so councillor Sangster?
Ah, yes, thank you, ma'am. I'd actually like to speak just about point three of the motion, if that's possible. Is that okay? Yep. So I'd like to speak against the motion. I'd like to speak in support of the hard rubbish trial as it currently stands, and to speak against councillor Greco's amendment to this. There's been hours of officers' time and hard work that has already gone into preparing for this trial. It's already been approved by the previous council, of which councillor Greco was a member. The trial is designed to help us move towards the state government's waste diversion target. It's fairer to rental tenants, giving them more flexibility. It creates less waste, especially in winter when soggy things left out on the pavement are disgusting. And also, it means that good usable items won't end up in landfill when they could be donated or passed on. The Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes who are community experts in this space, this is what they do, support the trial of the book system, as do I. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Councillor O'Brien?
Yes, so I have a few concerns about this, I guess the overall approach to begin with, in terms of these disparate items being bundled together. It doesn't really give us the greatest transparency for ourselves in discussing it, but also to the community and kind of wondering how they're bundled up like this. But again, I'll just, I will hone in on item three, the hard rubbish service. So the reviewing of the service with a goal of maximising diversion from landfill, maximising diversion from landfill is included in the Darabben Waste and Recycling Strategy. The review has already been done by council. As councillor Sangster has said, lots of work has already gone into this approach. This is an approach taken by lots of other councils. We have information that says we are one of only four metropolitan councils that currently has a bulk service, and the twenty or eight other metro councils offer either one or two booked annual collections a year. So we're a bit out of step on this one. The vote to support a trial was carried in February last year, and so requesting a report at this point in time just feels like, again, we're kicking the can down the road unnecessarily and we're creating extra work for staff when they're so busy, we're putting so much on them already, particularly as we go into a holiday season. The further concern is the framing of the new service as being more limited. That's not correct, because under the new programme, all eligible households are entitled to two cubic metres versus one cubic metre in the previous service. And the intent of the approach is to avoid the piles of material in our suburbs being soggy, being rained on us, has already been said. So that means fewer quality items end up being rescued and end up in the crusher. So Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes do amazing work in this space, and they're supportive of this trial. It is a trial, we do the work, we get the evidence, we make comparisons, and then we see which is the better approach, and we make some decisions based on that. It's time to be a bit more contemporary about how we do this and move away from the overconsumption. That means we just put stuff out when it's perfectly good, hoping it's rescued. We've all done it, we all love a little bit of the trawling and the treasure hunting, but economically and environmentally, it's not the strongest approach. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Oh, sorry, anything else to say about the motion?
I'll be speaking against the motion. Are there any other speakers for? No?
Yep, she'll be next, sorry.
Thank you. I speak to this motion with concern around the governance elements presented here. One of the things that we took away from that, you know, very packed week-long induction week was do not do Omni notices of motion, and what we have in front of us is a notice of motion with four completely disparate items on there. And so I note with concern that this approach that's taken by a very experienced councillor, and it's, I find it quite discombobulating to be in this position. Because I don't feel that we can have a proper debate. I don't, again, I feel I'm not fully informed about where the council is at with aged care services. As somebody who's, you know, family members have engaged in not necessarily Darabben City Council aged care home services, I am one hundred percent committed to ensuring that we provide quality home aged care services for our aging community, and that is something that our community has told us that they also value very highly. And so, yes, I support reaffirming our current commitment, but what is our current commitment? I don't really know. And again, I would speak, I'm here standing as a renter in a high-rise apartment building who looks to the new proposed trial system for booked hard waste collection service, which actually presents us with an opportunity, councillors, to ensure that we can actually work with some body corporates to ensure that those people who are currently locked out of the hard waste collection services might have the opportunity to have a partnership to give renters and other occupants of high-rise apartment buildings, of which fifty percent in Darabben live in South Central Ward. And I've spoken to quite a lot of them during the election campaign, and this is something that they, they don't feel like they are part of our community, and this is one way that we can actually involve them in our community. As we've mentioned, Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes and the service they do does actually provide a sense of community, and it's part of what we love about living here. So I'm not in favour of, I will wrap up, I'm not in favour of cancelling the hard rubbish trial before it's even begun.
Thank you. And councillor Turri?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll try and deal with each of the parts in turn. Just to pick up before I forget on one of the things councillor Jolly mentioned, the governance, perceived governance issue in terms of an omnibus, let's say, motion, I think that separating it out would go a fair way to addressing that issue. In terms of part one of the motion, I think I very much look forward to receiving that report. I think it'd be very interesting to see the results of the community engagement in relation to the Reservoir Leisure Centre that's been taking place, I believe, throughout the last couple of months into this month. In relation to aged care, I know that Darabben provides a great local service to our senior citizens in our community, and I wholeheartedly support a reaffirmation of our commitment to provide that service as councillor Greco outlined in his contribution. Look, in terms of the trial in three, in part three of the motion, I don't, I don't think that that motion should be perceived as a scrapping of the trial. It's asking for a report, and I mean, we can get into a debate about, you know, whether it's more limited or not, but I don't really want to engage in a debate about semantics and wording and definitions and things like that. But I think asking for a report, if, if that's what we're being asked to agree to, which it certainly seems that way, I think is a prudent way of addressing the issue. And same goes for the mid-year review of the budget. I think it's a prudent report for councillors to obtain, and so we can review our budget position six months into the financial year.
Okay, are we done? No, unless councillor Greco wants to respond.
Thank you. Just very quickly in my write-up reply, just to try to address some of the issues that were raised. Firstly, in relation to aged care, I think it's really important that this council affirms itself in relation to the position that it holds. In relation to aged care, it gives a sense of assurance. In relation to aged care, it gives a sense of assurance to our aged care recipients, and also more importantly, to our staff that provide that service to, to our community. So taking a position on whether you're against privatisation or not, I think it's important, and I think that it's important that the community knows where councillors stand on that. In relation to hard waste, it was raised that, the various points that were raised, all that this is calling for is not a, it's not a cancelling of the trial, it's calling for a report, for the report to come back to us that explores, does the comparisons, explores even other options. I mean, the previous report did not explore whether the hard waste took place, whether it could take place in the summer season rather than the winter season, where a lot of the hard waste gets damaged because of rain. And, and also it's, it's important to note that the previous report that we did get in February, that process was a bit rushed. The community was, again, as I said, divided in relation to whether they wanted a trial or whether they wanted to continue on with the existing service. And also, as we know, that the, the bulk hard waste process, it actually does encourage recycling amongst our community. And there's a, I know many people in the community actually look forward to that and, and to go around and pick up odd items and things like that. So it's only a report, it's not preempting anything. Let's get a report, let's get a much more comprehensive review, and like that we'll know which way to move forward, one way or the other. In terms of governance issues.
Councillor Greco, you need to wrap up?
I'll just finish with this. There was a clear rationale that was put there. I hope councillors took the time to read that, which would prioritize you with a sufficient background in relation to the four points that were raised. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the vote. Could we get just part one up on the screen, please? So we're going to vote for four, four times. So part one, which is about the Reservoir Leisure Centre, can I please ask for all those who, who support the motion to raise your hand? That one's passed unanimously. Thank you. Part two, if we can get that up on the screen, council in-house home care services. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Part three, the hard rubbish waste annual collection. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, so councillor O'Turrie, councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Greco, councillors Salkus and councillor O'Laurs. Those opposed, we have councillor Jellie, councillor O'Brien and councillor Sangster. And if we can go to item four, which is the mid-year budget review, all those in favour, raise your hand. That one is unanimous. So, thank you. And I guess just to reiterate, I do agree that in future it would be great if we can keep things, motions to, or NOMs to one topic. I think that really does ease with decision-making and debate. So that would be really good. And also, you know, I think in terms of feeling like you can't vote on something that you don't know enough about, I think that's a reasonable position to hold. And so, yeah, that's, I just want to make that point. All right, I think, where is my, are we at the end? Item twelve. Urgent business? Don't believe we have any. No urgent business. Consideration of reports considered confidential? None of those. Close of meeting. Look, we did pretty well. Well done, everybody. Thank you very much. I will declare the meeting closed at nine fifteen. And just thank everyone very much for, you know, I think there was quite an effort made to work collaboratively towards tonight's meeting. I really appreciate lots of people's help, all of you and the governance people, and I'll get better by the next meeting.